Good evening. I'd like to call the October 8, 2020 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I would like to call on Councilmember Smiley for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now if we'll stand and is there a, anybody have a picture of the American flag or something?
The city clerk right behind her.
There you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover? Mayor Protem Glover? Oh, you're muted.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum?
All right. Thank you very much. When I move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
No changes, Mayor.
Members of council, are there any recommended changes to tonight's agenda?
Oh, Mayor Connolly, I would just like to ask, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but that we, um, I'd like to present you with the 2021 calendar, some changes for this year. I'm not sure where you should add that.
Move to add the calendar to the agenda.
I'll second that, Meyerhofer.
All right. So motions been made by-
And move to approve the agenda with the addition of the calendar item.
All right.
Do this in one vote.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. Let's add that, I guess, after number one, which is appointments to the boards and commissions, if everyone's okay with that. Okay? All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'm now calling the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
All right, that's five zero on approval, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who are registered have spoken, individuals who had not registered will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for tonight and I'm looking at the public input inbox and it looks like we have not received any messages either.
All right. Thank you very much. We will close the public hearing. We'll move on to appointments. That of order?
Historic Preservation Commission, Councilmember Daniels?
Continue.
Housing Authority, Councilmember Smiley?
I nominate Shirley Williams.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's five zero on approval.
I do think that Councilmember Litchfield is on now. Um, I just, he may have been on mute a second ago.
Oh, okay. Um, let me ask him to unmute. Councilmember Litchfield, are you on the meeting?
I am. I am.
Okay. Let me just-
And with the last vote, I have an aye.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry about that. I'll, let me go ahead and just relabel you so.
All right. Congratulations, Ms. Williams.
Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Protem Glover?
Human Relations Council, I want to nominate all the ones who are eligible to be reappointed.
I'll second that. If a second's necessary. Meyerhofer, by the way.
I found everybody asleep.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Glover and second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. Do we have the names of each of those individuals?
We don't. Do you? Do you have them, Valerie?
You, would you like me to read them out loud?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Samar Badwin, Todd Fraley, K. Rupa Gandhi, Tricia Vu, Lumax Mazel, and Deborah Shepherd.
All right. Sorry, I got Badwin, Fraley, Ga-
Gandhi.
Gandhi.
Vu.
Okay.
Mazel.
Okay.
And Shepherd.
All right. All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
And you just want to remember to announce yourself.
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
All right. Mayor, that's six zero on approval.
All right. Congratulations, Ms. Badwin, Mr. Fraley, Miss Gandhi?
Yes.
Miss Gandhi, Miss Vu, Miss Mazel, and Miss Shepherd?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Congratulations, everyone.
Okay. Um, Pick Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I will need to continue that, please. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, Police Community Relations Committee, Councilmember Bell, and this is a direct appointment.
Yeah, I would like to appoint Robert King III, please.
Okay.
Congratulations, Mr. King III.
All right. And last, we have the Youth Council. Mayor Protem Glover?
I'd like to appoint Diego Lorenzo.
Okay.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
It was a second?
Wake up, wake up.
Bell.
Okay. Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero on approval.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Lorenzo.
Okay. And that concludes the appointments for tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number two, which is the calendar, and we'll stick with the city clerk.
Okay. So I have updated the 2021 calendar just to take into account a couple of scheduling conflicts. I presented that to the Mayor and City Council. The date that we are going to change is June 10th. We'll push that meeting back to June 17th. And likewise, we'll also amend the budget schedule to change the approval date of the budget due June 17th, 2021. Also, I just would like to note there was another scheduling conflict for this December 2020, so I would like to propose that we change the Monday, December 7th workshop and meeting from that date to Monday, December 14th.
Move to approve the revisions to the calendar.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
All right. Mayor, that's six zero on approval.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now move on to old business, item number two. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is an ordinance requested by Amy A. Edwards to rezone a total of 14.221 acres located along Portertown Road between Eastern Pines Road and the Norfolk Southern Railroad from RA 20 to General Commercial, 5.03 acres, and R 6 for the remaining 9.183 acres. Staff is available to answer any questions, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there, are there any questions for the staff regarding this item?
Uh, this is Meyerhofer. I have a question.
Mr. Meyerhofer?
Thank you. Did we receive any comment on this? Any, any public comment for or against this?
I can check the public input mailbox. No, sir, I've not seen any come in today. I don't know if Shontae or Brad, if they're here, if they want to also chime in.
I do not believe that we've received any comments other than the ones that would have come in from the September meeting.
And I believe then there weren't any comments against. Is that correct?
Let me check. I can't remember. I thought there was one or two that we received. Okay, um. Okay. Uh, there were, there were none since. I do think there were, there was at least one we had in opposition from my memory.
Any other questions, Councilmember Meyerhofer, or any of the other council members?
I think, well, if, if I still have the floor, I, I think there was some questions about traffic concerns. I would just say, I've been out there many times. I haven't seen traffic be an issue out there. Unlike some of these others that I voted against in the past, I don't think, I haven't witnessed the same concern, uh, those traffic concerns that I have in other places. I don't recall anybody reaching out and saying they had an issue with it. I actually reached out to one of the business owners over there and just briefly asked about traffic issues over there, if they ever had any or saw anything that concerned them, and they said no. So, um, so that being said, I'll move to approve it.
Second.
Just as, as, um-
A second.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Council, actually, I mean, Mayor Protem Glover. Councilmember Smiley?
Yeah, if we're gonna bring in, um, you know, things other people have said, not here, then, uh, I'll certainly point out that there's been, you know, a pretty brisk discussion of this on, uh, on a couple of social media platforms, and they have in fact, you know, said that there is significant traffic problems out there. So, um, I realize they haven't come here to, to say that, and so I wasn't going to bring it up. But if we're going to bring in that other people are saying there's not a traffic problem, well, you know, you know, many of the citizens are saying there are traffic problems, and our own city, our own traffic engineer has documented traffic problems. So, the road is, I will remind everyone, and I'm sure council remembers this, the road is already, you know, at 110% capacity, and this would take it up to about 150% capacity. So, I don't think it's a question of having, did anybody tell us their traffic problems? The, you know, that's been documented by the staff. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments before we vote on the motion? All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Nay.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, four to two.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public that occur only during the public hearing is allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We thank you for your cooperation. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing of the evening is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend Title IX, Chapter IV of the city code to create standards for agricultural master-planned communities. And I'll turn this over to staff planner Brad Sevier. Brad?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Brad Sevier, and I'm with the Planning Division. I'm gonna share my screen for you guys, and, um, I want to talk to you about, can you, can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah. So I want to talk to you about this text amendment that we've proposed. The reason that we were doing this is we want to create new standards for a new type of master-planned community based around agriculture and healthy living. We wanted to do this because we want to increase lifestyle options for, for both current and future residents, and we want to promote good health and walkable communities, um, which is part of the goals of the Horizons Plan. Just a little bit about what a master-planned community is. It's a special type of development. It's very flexible style of development. It gives you a lot of options as a developer, but with that flexibility and with those options, there's a trade-off in that there's higher oversight as opposed to just a rezoning or something. Conditions can be replaced, can be placed on these projects by the city council to mitigate potential impacts from that flexibility. We currently have master-planned communities in the city, and what we're doing is talking about adding a new style. So currently, uh, the type we have are more centered around like a golf course style development with a, you know, a country club and maybe a shop or something in it. And what we want to do is in place of those recreational amenities, we want to provide agricultural amenities such as farms and, 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 uh, commercial opportunities related to that. With this, it's a little different than, um, most styles of development that we allow in the city. There's a special use permit involved in the project, but instead of going to the Board of Adjustment, like most special use permits do, it comes to you guys, it goes to the city council, and, um, then after that, it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission for preliminary plat- approval. Um, major amendments, if there's any changes that have to be made, they'll come back and they'll get a new approval, and you can change conditions or, or whatever is necessary at that time. Minor amendments can be approved by the planning director, and those are just things that, you know, maybe engineering necessity means that a road has to shift around a little bit or something. That way, we're not wasting time. So, the stuff that we've changed from our current master-planned community ordinance to the proposed new version, in place of golf courses, like I mentioned before, we'd be having more agricultural type of amenities. We'd also have a new type of commercial facility called an agricultural commercial facility, which would connect, uh, commercial land uses to the agricultural land in a way that would integrate the product of the agricultural land. So you might see, uh, you know, a daycare that had a little petting zoo or something, something along those lines. You know, there's, there's a lot of options with it, and the, there's a lot more of an emphasis placed on walking trails, and that is in an attempt to integrate the farmland into the neighborhood experience. So when you're living there, you really are living right next to a farm and really getting a, a new, uh, a new style of development. It's important to note that the farms are owned separately from the residential land, and so this is very similar to the golf course style community where, um, the developer or an HOA or a management company runs the golf course. You'd have that same situation with the farms in this case. Um, the, we've had to make some changes to stormwater, um, not in terms of what our standards are, but, um, currently agricultural uses are exempt from our stormwater regulations, and so we've had to add some stormwater language in here to make sure that, um, these communities in, in total do follow all of our stormwater regulations, even where, where there are farm components. Uh, some examples, this is a rendering, this is, this is a rendering of a community that's in the middle of being built in North Carolina, but just to bring it a little more down to earth, uh, this is a, a picture of a community in Georgia, one of these communities, and you can see there's farmland, a little bit of farmland and a little bit of greenhouses, but then on the, the left side of the picture, you can see a fence and you can see these houses running along it. Um, and then here's that same community, but from the side of the houses, you can see you're really right up there. You're really kind of getting an, an integrated experience where your neighborhood and the farms are, are next to each other, and, um, it's really pretty cool. Um, so for the Horizons 2026 plan, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, the amendment aligns with the goals found in there, uh, and it does align with several of the goals, a couple of which, um, you know, goal 5.2, and then policy 5.22, which is to enhance access to daily needs. Um, there's commercial components to these types of developments, um, and, you know, you could eat locally, um, you know, you can get grocery supplies, this sort of thing, um, with the farm-type commercial uses, uh, and so that certainly speaks to that policy. And then we also want to encourage identifying identifiable neighborhood centers, and with these developments, there are certain portions that get designated to be non-residential that will have, you know, a restaurant, this type of thing. And so that will help to, um, create an identifiable neighborhood center that the community can kind of shape around. And then also, uh, goal 7.3, which is to increase access to healthy food, and of course, everybody, um, loves having their food supply right where they live. Local food is a big thing right now, and certainly it doesn't get much more local than your backyard, really. Um, one thing that's important to consider with this is that because it's a special use permit, it is a quasi-judicial decision when it gets to you guys, and so it's important for, um, the decision-makers, which is council in this case, to be impartial. And that, what's really important about that is, um, it's, it's really best if you guys don't talk to anyone, um, who's involved in applying for one of these things outside of the hearing, or anyone who might have issues with one of these types of projects outside of the hearing. And it's not to say that you can't, you know, exchange words, but really, it's just better if you steer the conversation away from that and have any sort of substantial discussion about the project at the, the hearing, because if you don't, that can be perceived as biasing a result, a result, and then a good, a well-intended conversation can derail the project or, or make it, you know, set it back a couple of months as a new hearing may have to be held. So it's, it's a little bit different for you guys than what you typically do, but, um, you know, it's, it's a good process, and, and we already have it in place for master-planned communities today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sevier. Any questions for Mr. Sevier? All right. No questions, see none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
First speaker that we have, Mayor Connolly, is Mr. Tim Newell.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much. Um, I am a land planner, landscape architect with Rivers and Associates, and I just want to do, uh, speak in support of this text amendment. I'm seeing, uh, this agri, we're calling them agri-hoods mostly now, but we're seeing a incredible, um, increase in popularity of these type communities across the country. Uh, the Urban Land Institute projects right now, there's about 200 of them. Some are in, in planning stages, some are, uh, under construction, some are mature with a lot of residents living in there, but they've been incredibly successful. They've opened up opportunities for a new lifestyle for people, uh, which I think is very timely right now. But, um, the, these, the nice thing about these communities, and I tell people the easiest way to understand agrihood, it's like the golf community, as Brad mentioned, but take the golf course out and you put crops in there. So it's, um, hot, housing that's backing up to, uh, farm fields. So, uh, this appeals to a wide range of the housing market out there. We've, we've seen that a lot of millennials love this lifestyle, great place to raise families, and seniors really adapt to it because the opportunity is to get out, and if you want to garden a little bit, you can, but if not, you're gonna have fresh, organic produce right there at your fingertips. So that's been very popular. Uh, these, uh, communities are, are great for, for the public at large as well, because typically, they will have farmers, a produce stand that's available for anyone to come in, and the little, uh, commercial or farm villages, we typically call them. There's farm-to-table restaurants and other services and retail businesses that are, uh, selling products that are grown there. So I just wanted to, to say that as a land planner, I fully support this. It's, it's something that's, uh, is, is sweeping the country and the, uh, planning circles, and I think it would be great for Pitt County and Greenville. would be great for Pitt County and Greenville to have this type of development here. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Any questions for Mr. Newell? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers, but I will check the inbox. And I do not see any messages for this item.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and I will go ahead and check the inbox again. And we have not received any messages in opposition either.
All right. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. No discussion?
Move to approve the item. Do we have to do that next time?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say your favorite phrase that you like to me to talk about.
Well, you left it, you left it, you left it, you left it quiet so long there. I thought you were waiting for it.
Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments. Such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. All right, we'll move on to the next public hearing. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance requesting the repair or the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 1603 Chestnut Street, which is tax parcel 09513. And I'll call on Code Enforcement Supervisor Carlton Dawson for that presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Wall. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Today, I will be presenting on abandoned structure and the ordinance requesting. I'll read as follows, and I'm going to share my screen with you. I'm sorry about that. Can everyone see that? See my slide? And I'll read the request, ordinance requiring the repair or the demolition and removal of dwelling located at 1603 Chestnut Street. The aerial photo shows that the property is in the Higgs neighborhood. It is in the general location and vicinity of the homeless shelter, a park, and a veteran center. It's also adjoined by two residential properties that are occupied, and one of those properties is on Chestnut and on Manhattan Street. A brief summary concerning this property. The property has been vacant since 2014 and without utilities for over three years. There's been 18 different code cases at the location. The current abandoned structure case, which we are, you know, going over today, there's been several unsecured structure cases on the property, wicket lot and trash violations. Again, the property is located near the Dream Park, the Community Crossroads, homeless shelter, the American Legion building. This presents a problem with the property and the condition that it, that is, that is in. It is unsafe for children and the general public. The Pitt County taxes have been delinquent since 2011 with over $2,700 past due. The current tax value is $17,316. Estimated cost of repair to bring the property up to the minimum housing code is estimated at $89,089. Estimated cost for demolition on this property location is $6,000, and this includes asbestos testing and removal. This photo is a photo of the front entryway of the property, showing rotten wood at the gable ends, rotten wood at the gable vents, the board, the windows are boarded and because they are in disrepair, and the front door is boarded as well because it's in disrepair. Also, there's a foundation vent that is open. Next photo is the left side of the house, showing that the house trim is in disrepair to include the soffit and acacia boards. The windows are in disrepair, so they are boarded up. There's overgrown vines, trash, and also another open vent at the foundation. Next slide is right side of the house with severely dilapidated roof system, showing that the roof sheathing and rafters are in disrepair. And we have a close-up shot of the roof system, showing that it's severely, there's severe wood rot and the roof is in danger of collapsing. Our next photo is a photo of the rear of the property showing open crawl space. This is frequently used by legal activity. We found needles and also stolen goods in this area. Also, it shows clothing from vagrant activity. Again, the windows are boarded, the rear door is boarded because they're in disrepair. And there's overgrown vegetation in the rear. In this photo, there shows, and this was taken in 2016, there was gang activity at the property location. The photo, there's a photo of the interior with the ceiling in danger of collapsing, and I apologize for the darkness of the photo. There's no light in there, and we use our flash and our flashlights to get those photos. Next photo is, again, the interior of the structure, showing the ceiling collapsing, the wall in disrepair and falling on the floor. This concludes my presentation. I'd like to make, again, make a recommendation for approval of an ordinance requiring demolition... I am recommending an approval of an ordinance requiring the repair or demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 1603 Chestnut Street.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dawson?
Yes, I do. This is in my district, and Ms. Ann Huggins and I have been complaining about this a lot, and I'm glad to see that Code Enforcement are now at the point where they can bring us these abandoned structures so that we can take those down. Really appreciate the work that Code Enforcement has done, and this is only just the beginning because there are a lot of things there. Trailers out there that need to be moved, and they had not moved them because of the COVID, but that wasn't the only cause, but they've been there a long time, and I really appreciate it. It's a long process for Code Enforcement to go through this and, you know, advertise it and do all, and, you know, it's almost a waste of manpower when you see something this bad that really needs to come down. And like Mr. Dawson said, you can see that there has been a lot of activities in the rear, and that's what happens when you have these structures, these abandoned structures. Then you're gonna have vagrants, you're gonna have drug dealers, and all kinds of people come into it. So I really appreciate this being brought forth to the city council from Code Enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. First, any other questions for Mr. Dawson?
Just one point of clarification. I think you said in there that you're requesting a resolution for repair or demolition, and the repair aspect is requesting that the owner of the property repair it or demolish it. Otherwise, the city would take the steps to move forward with it. Is that right?
I will ask the attorney, the city attorney, to clarify that, please.
Yeah. Mayor and council, the way the ordinance works, if you read the ordinance, it authorizes the owner to repair or demolish it within 90 days of this ordinance being enacted by council. If the owner does not take self-help and complete it within 90 days after this, if this ordinance is enacted, then the city has authority to proceed with demolition.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dawson? All right. Very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item, and I will check our inbox. And I do not see any messages submitted in favor for this item.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and I will go ahead and check the inbox, and we have not received any messages in opposition.
All right. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion.
I move to approve.
Hold on to that motion.
I'm ready.
Mayor and council, can I just say one, make one revision to the ordinance? It says that after that 90 days has elapsed, that the Code Enforcement officer can repair or demolish the dwelling. I would ask that the council amend that to say that after the 90 days has elapsed, the city is authorized to demolish it. Of course, the city has no interest in repairing this dwelling.
Okay.
All right. All right. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments. And such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Move on to the next public hearing. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is presentation in a public hearing on the rental assistance to support small business incubation, and I'll call on Financial Services Manager Denisha Harris for that presentation. Denisha?
Thank you, City Manager Wall. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'll go ahead and share my screen really quickly. Thank you. In tonight's presentation, we will be discussing the next steps for the Incubate to Accelerate Program, an initiative of the MWBE program to assist in the growth and sustainability of small businesses. As an introduction, what is MWBE? The Minority and Women Business Enterprise Program is a joint program between the city of Greenville and Greenville Utilities. It serves to promote our policy to provide minorities and women equal opportunity to sell their products and services to the city and to GUC. The major functions of the MWBE program. It serves as a liaison between the MWBE business community and the buyers and project managers of both the city and Greenville Utilities. It is responsible for the compliance with North Carolina general statutes and the city and GUC policy. It reports MWBE participation to the state of North Carolina, city council, the Greenville Utilities Commission, and other interested bodies. It provides business development and technical assistance to MWBEs, and also develops and creates strategic alliances to increase the participation and utilization of MWBE firms. And now, an overview of the Incubate to Accelerate Program. Incubate to Accelerate was conceived in response to COVID-19 and the subsequent economic slowdown, and also a local small business survey that was conducted in 2018. This program provides, this program was designed to provide a number of resources for small and micro businesses to support and increase overall viability. It also serves as an opportunity to expand the economic hub of eastern North Carolina through proactive economic development and job creation, which is a goal of city council. There are three funding initiatives under the umbrella of Incubate to Accelerate, and they are the Rental Assistance Initiative, the MWBE Enterprise Loan Fund, and Back Office Supportive Services. The Rental Assistance Initiative has an allocation of $35,000. The MWBE Enterprise Fund, $65,000. Back Office Support Services, $35,000, for a total of $135,000. Tonight's public hearing is to consider the leases related to the Rental Assistance The Rental Assistance Initiative will provide rental support for eligible local small businesses. To be eligible for this assistance, you must be a small business with gross receipts under $500,000 or have under 10 employees. You must be located in the city of Greenville or the ETJ, must have been in operation at least three years, and must be of low to moderate income as defined by HUD, or employer person of low to moderate income also as defined by HUD. The program will operate with two-year lease contracts between the local property owner and the city on behalf of the local business. The city will make lease payments on behalf of the business directly to the property owner. In return for rental assistance, the small business will submit payment to the city of $200 plus 4% of business profits each month. An escalation clause will be added to each agreement that increases the local business's payment to the city after six months. The purpose of the escalation clause is to prepare the business to completely take over the rental responsibility at their location or to relocate to another location. Two locations have been identified. The first at 415 Evans Street with rental assistance of $900 per month, and the second at 804 West Fitz Street at $500 in rental assistance per month. The locations are in Uptown Greenville and West Greenville. You'll see here a picture of the location at 415 Evans Street located in Uptown Greenville, and then here, the shared kitchen space as located at 804 West Fitz Street, and this is the current location of the Gold Post Cafe. The next steps are for council to approve the lease agreement upon, for council to approve lease agreements upon public hearing, publicly market and advertise the program, connect with collaborative partners to source and identify potential tenants, release the sublease application, evaluate and assess applicants for future growth, potential, and sustainability, award subleases to selected tenants, and provide ongoing support and oversight of tenant business operations. It is staff's recommendation that following a public hearing, council adopt a motion authorizing the city to, as tenant, enter the lease agreement with Arthur Wallace for 804 West Fitz Street, and enter the lease agreement with Corbett Hardy Properties LLC for 415 Evans Street, and authorize city staff to select grantees to enter sublease agreements with the city for the above properties for job creation, job training, community development purposes. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. And any questions for staff?
This is Meyer Hubbard. Just a quick question, and I apologize if I missed it. What was the term of the leases?
Two years.
Two years. Okay, cool. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Harris. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item, and I will check our inbox. Okay. And we have not received any messages in support of this item either.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and I'm looking at the inbox, and we have not received any messages in opposition.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. All right. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the city council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, our final public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The final public hearing is to consider the naming of the city's adventure park, and with that, I will turn it over to Rec. and Parks, Recreation and Parks Director Gary Fenton. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem Glover and members of council. I'll share my screen. Can you see that okay, I assume?
Yes.
The Recreation and Parks Department is seeking a name for the adventure park being developed on the north bank of the Tar River on the city's east side. The acreage envisioned for this evolving park is situated along Greenville Boulevard and will be accessible from the Tar River and also from Olpak-Tolles Road as delineated in the white line on this particular slide. 164 acres on the east side of Greenville Boulevard have already been acquired, and initial improvements are underway with plans to make this portion of the park accessible to the public in the spring. We're hopeful of acquiring acreage on the west side of Greenville Boulevard as well, which will ultimately allow trail connections between the adventure park and River Park North. On this particular slide, you can see here where I've placed the cursor, the easternmost point of River Park North, which comes very close to the western property. Acquisition of these riverside lake lands and their development into this park was a recommendation of the Tar River Legacy Plan, with hopes that our community would reap more benefits from the fact that a river runs through it. The park will primarily focus on activities and opportunities related to its lakes, related to its natural beauty, and of course, related to its proximity to the Tar River. Council has the authority to name a city park, and Recreation and Parks staff have asked citizens and community organizations for potential names for consideration. Ultimately, the five most popular names were included in an online survey circulated from July 14th to August the 5th. 738 responses were received indicating name preferences. The top two were Emerald Riverfront Park with a tally of 253, and Wildwood Park with a tally of 171. Emerald Riverfront Park was published on the city's website for 30 days prior to the public hearing by the Recreation and Parks Commission, which was held on September 23rd. However, the city's policy and guidelines for naming city of Greenville parks states that priority in their naming shall be given to geographical locations, historic significance, or geological features. Commission members felt that Wildwood more clearly described the character of this natural area, and would more easily lend itself to a marketing initiative for the park and for the opportunities the park will provide. The commissions voted to recommend the name Wildwood Park to council for your consideration as the official name for the city's new adventure park. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fenton. Any other questions for our staff? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Okay, we have one speaker registered, and Mr. Mike Sad. Mr. Sad, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thanks. Manager Wall, Mayor Connolly, council members, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I'll make it brief. Being a member of the Parks and Rec Commission, we are real excited about the new property, 165 acres across the river. There's so much potential for this property: kayaking, canoeing, paddle boarding, hiking, camping, skateboarding. And we debated the names and looked at the proposed names, and the two names that, you know, that were, that we reviewed the most were Emerald Waterfront Park and Wildwood Park. And the name is real important to the city because it will help clarify to people that are not familiar with the park what it's all about. We felt that Wildwood Park would best represent that. And thinking, reviewing the name Emerald Waterfront Park, first of all, it's a long name. It's got 23 characters. It's a bit of a tongue twister. It is a little hard to pronounce the Italian or communicate with other people. And it may potentially pose a problem for signage being so long, which would make it difficult for marketing and the such, and which is so important now that it's a new park and needs to be promoted. Also, it would be difficult on print media and cards and any type of fire that may be used. Whereas the name that we preferred, Wildwood Park, we felt it was a simpler name. It represented the characteristics of the park a lot nicer. It's easy to pronounce. It's instead of being 13, excuse me, 23 characters long, it's only 13 characters long. And if you look at just the name Wildwood, it's only eight characters long. Also, we felt that this would be wonderful for marketing in the sense that it's just easy to communicate and share and represents the park well. But additionally, if we wanted to promote the features of the park, like, we could, you know, use the name Wildwood Kayaking, or Wildwood Biking Trail, or Wildwood Canoeing. So, we felt like it had a lot more legs. And we just felt that this would assist city staff in promoting the park a lot more and had a great representation of the park. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts with you tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sad.
Thanks.
Like your picture.
I try.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward. You have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional speakers.
Did you say something else? I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. All right. Those in opposition to the applicant, please come forward. State your name for the record. You have 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers in opposition, and I'm sorry. I failed to note that, I'll check the inbox. We did not receive any comments in favor of this item, and I'm looking, and we do not have any comments in opposition to this item.
All right. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. All right. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments. And such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. I would now like to call on Attorney McGirt. I think he has a motion that he would like us to make for all the public hearings.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, I recommend that council make a motion that it held a public hearing on items three through six, that it closed those public hearings, and all of those public hearings are placed on the regular meeting agenda for October the 19th for action, including taking a vote on each of those items. So moved.
Second. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. And again, as a reminder, all the public hearings that were discussed tonight will be on the agenda for October 19th. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyer Hopper?
Aye.
Motion passed, Mayor, 6-0.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to other items of business. Item number seven, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is the selection for the design firm for the construction of the new community pool, and I will again call on Recreation and Parks Director Gary Fenton.
Thank you, City Manager Wall. I'll share my screen again. This item and the next item relate to design services for recreation and park improvements and projects that will both be associated with Thomas Forman Park, where the Epps Recreation Center is located, at Fifth and Nash Streets here in Greenville. The first that we're talking about at this moment is the construction of the new community pool in Thomas Forman Park, a project that will ultimately replace the existing pool that has operated in Guy Smith Park for the past 48 years. In choosing a location for the pool, a priority was given to the West Greenville/South Greenville area, and the Thomas Forman Park site became the preferred location. The project will include a zero-depth entry recreation pool with a multi-feature play structure, a competition-style lap pool, changing rooms, and shade structures. If budgets allow, it will also include a small water slide attached to the recreation pool, and also a concessions area. The design firm will ensure site suitability, will develop a conceptual design, will follow up with detailed construction drawings, will finalize the specifications, and if funds allow, will possibly provide construction administration services for this project. Process for selecting a design firm included publishing requests for qualifications on August 22nd, I'm sorry, 27th, that resulted in nine statements of qualifications being received by the September 17th deadline. In order to evaluate the submissions, staff considered the firm's and their staff's qualifications and experience, the particular approach to the project, their current workload, and its possible impact on their ability to meet our time schedule, and the firm's accessibility. The evaluation team was made up of five city employees, whose individual evaluations were reviewed September 18th through 22nd, with the team discussing the results on September 23rd. Ultimately, Kimley Horn emerged as the top firm to design our new community pool. Kimley Horn's mittel was highlighted by the qualifications of the project team members, the firm's approach to the project, their commitment to stay within budget and within our time requirements, and their extensive experience with aquatic facilities. The company and the project team's primary contact, Mr. Mark Hatchell, have completed over 100 aquatic projects in the last 20 years, and their subconsultant, Councilman Hunsacker, is also a nationally recognized swimming pool design firm. Some examples of the firm's project include Holding Park Pool in White Forest, North Carolina, that was completed in 2018 at a cost of $3.5 million. TZ Park Pool, which is in Dallas, Texas, was completed in 2019 at a cost of $3.6 million. And Greenville Park Pool in Columbia, South Carolina, that was completed in 2015 at a cost of $3.5 million. Following completion of the design phase in early to mid next spring, construction will begin on our new pool with anticipated completion 12 months later, in time for ribbon cutting and a public opening in June of 2022. The recommendation is that council approve Kimley Horn to provide design services for our new outdoor pool, and authorize staff to move forward with contract negotiations, which we hope to bring back to council for approval at your next meeting on October the 19th. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
All right, any questions for Mr. Fenton?
Move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote. Madam Clerk?
Sorry. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyer Hopper?
Aye.
Mayor, that's 6-0 in approval.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number eight. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is the selection of the design firm for the renovations to Epps Recreation Center. And again, Mr. Fenton?
Thank you. City Manager Wall? The Epps Recreation Center, as was noted, in Thomas Forman Park is also a project of slated renovations to the facility. The project includes development of a main entrance to the Recreation Center. Right today, when you come to that center, it's a little hard to tell which is the main entrance, but there at the main entrance, we would create a front desk and lobby area, including controlled entrance capabilities like we have at the South Greenville Recreation Center. We would also have a new teen lounge with amenities, HVAC improvements, and also improvements to the Epps Alumni Heritage Center, which is located there at Epps. Various phases of the project include the development of a preliminary design, creation of a detailed construction drawings, finalizing the specifications, and again, possibly constructing, I'm sorry, possibly construction administration services if the budget will allow that. Like the pool RFQ, the Epps RFQ was advertised on August 27th with a September 17th deadline, and six statements of qualifications were received in response to it. Evaluation criteria for those SOQs included the firm's and its staff's qualifications and experience, their approach to the project, current workload capability to meet our schedule, and the firm's accessibility. The evaluation team was composed of five city staff who reviewed the SOQs and discussed the results from September 18th to 23rd. The three top-scoring firms were then interviewed by Zoom on September 28th, and after a thorough evaluation, HH Architecture was selected as the top firm for design services for the Epps Recreation Center renovation project. HH Architect's mittel was highlighted by the qualifications of the project team, their approach to this particular project, their experience in historic preservation, which is very important for the improvements to the Alumni Heritage Center, and their commitment to stay within budget and time requirements. Their design experience has included 2 million square feet in community and recreation facilities, and a total of $260 million in costs associated with those projects. References provided, supportive feedback, especially regarding projects related to recreation facilities. Some related projects that HH Architecture has worked on include the WA Foster Recreation Center in Goldsboro, North Carolina, a $5.2 million project to replace the previous center, and it included youth and fitness rooms, entrance enhancements, and subdivisible multipurpose rooms. Also, the Hill Street Park Center in Raleigh, that was a $2.26 million project that included multipurpose rooms, covered outdoor education spaces, and various classrooms. In addition, there's the Community Center in West in Fayetteville, North Carolina, that was a $4 million project, which included ADA updates, friendly designs targeting senior citizens, and a fitness equipment room. The recommendation is that council approve HH Architecture to provide design services for the Epps Recreation Center renovations project, and authorize staff to move forward with contract negotiations, which we hope to bring back to council for approval at your October 19th meeting. If there are any questions, we'll try to answer them for you.
All right, any questions for Mr. Fenton?
I do.
Councilmember Smiley?
Gary, I'm sure your staff considered this and discussed it, but I thought maybe I'd give you a chance to at least expand on your thinking. These, you know, these two projects, the pool and this facility are right next to each other. Was there any discussion about there being anything feasible or advantageous or disadvantageous about having one firm handle the whole thing?
Well, certainly, that would, that might be convenient. However, in terms of Kimley Horn, the aquatics piece of Kimley Horn is tremendous. The strength there is absolutely big. It's really, it's really established. And they might be able to do recreation centers too, but we believe that these two will certainly cooperate very closely with each other. They've probably done so in the past, and we're, we think it's going to be a great site for these, for both improvements to that facility, but its relationship to the pool is going to be a good thing for us as well. Parking is shared, all that kind of thing. Parking is shared, all that kind of thing.
Thank you, I just thought it was worth, um, at least touching base with that, thanks.
I appreciate that, Councilman, thank you.
All right, any, uh, other questions, Mr. Fenton?
Move to approve.
Second.
He beat the District One Council representative to it.
I know. I gave her like a minute and a half. I'm sorry, I was sending the cheese, I'm sorry.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels? I'm sorry, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
All right, Mayor, that's 6-0 in approval.
All right, we'll now move on to the city manager's report. Madam Manager?
Mayor, I have no report this evening.
How about that? All right, then we'll move on to the comments from the mayor and the city council. Let's start this time with Councilmember Daniels. I think you're on mute.
No comment.
All that for no comment?
Right.
All right, Councilmember Bell?
No comment.
All right, Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
All right, Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
I just need about 10 minutes, I need to, I'm just kidding, guys, I-
All right, Mayor Protem, no. No comment? All right, Mayor Protem Glover?
No comments.
All right. All right, and that leaves me. The only thing I'm going to say is good luck to our Pirates this weekend. Golly, we need to win really bad this weekend, so hopefully they can pull it off. And also, the other thing I'll say is, uh, this week we had the announcement of Intersect East, which is also known as the Millennial Campus, which is going to be a major project in our community, so we're really looking forward to that, uh, coming through. That's going to be a major addition. Uh, just imagine driving over the 10th Street Connector and looking at those, those vacant warehouses on one side, and looking at the Dickinson Avenue in our Uptown District that's been completely revitalized as well. Uh, it's going to be pretty neat for our community, so thank you to the developers and for ECU working together to be able to, uh, bring that additional asset to our community. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. A call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
All right, motion passes Mayor 6-0.
Thank you very much. I hope everybody has a great weekend, stay safe, and we will see you on October 19th. Good night.